Praise the Lord, brothers and sisters.
Devauniki stotram, sahupradasasas.
Again, very happy to come and just share a wonderful fellowship.
Malamimajilakochi kodhishebu samiyandharakutun devanu nakichin dhanneeta.
Actually, I'm really very much tired.
Aavani zanik bhaagaalishpoyunana.
Not keeping well too.
Kuchum aarogyan gawad sarigaledu.
Then I promise that I will come and I will have.
Neenu ochi chappuka chaptanu gora puthiga chappaledu, chappalepoyanu.
So, this morning I requested Pastor Benny, just take the time.
Eirozu maa paapu puthi samiyanu gora Pastor Bennygarathis callni chappanu.
But anyhow, he pushed me again.
Ainun naaku unnanu kuchu mundum nathavunnaadu.
And I was thinking that I will sit over there and I will listen the message.
Neenu zaniku urchuni chakkaga vaakkenanu channukunana.
And I believe that he has given you the braid of life.
Manan ainu manuki jeevapu aahara nichadu.
I was sitting over there and I was thinking that these people are eating on a table, God's table.
Mari ikkada urchuni gora, mari andaragora devuni balla yeduta, devuni balla meda bhu manambhu chesunam.
At least, at least he will drop some crumbs for me.
Tinadapudu koni koni mokkalu ala iste, avmanam patukavu channukunana neenu.
But he, he, he did not drop anything for me.
Aida ainu naaki rozu akku mokka gora ledu.
Still, I will say God bless you.
Ainu devu me mala devichunu gaka.
I think that he is speaking from the Book of Acts.
An apostol kariyalu nuchmaatla eda.
Because I asked the brother, what is that book and what is that?
Pakunu nathanadu tonana apostkam entani chepin de entani.
So, little bit about, I could just understand about the Holy Ghost and oneness of the church.
Parishuddhaatma gurichchi, sanghamu kristalu aiketa avatanu gurichchi, ainu konni vishyalu punchkunana kontnanu mito.
See, it is very, very important.
Indikante manak thalesu chala chala pramukyamadi.
The church must come in unity.
Sanghamu nisanga aiketulake ravalipila.
If a prophet said, when the rapture is going to come.
Pravaktan adigaru, etabhati purosundiani.
He said.
Ainu chaptavunnaadu.
When the last ship will come in the fold.
Aakarigurya mandaloki vachinapudu, appudi etabhatasunand chappadu pilare.
When the last ship will come in the fold.
Aakarigurya epudaita mandaloki vachidu, appude etabhatastadi.
There will be a rapture.
Vantane etabhatle kellypothama nadainu.
And where that, being in a ministry, mari ka sevalo antamala, people they know that that last, lost one has to be found.
Nasinchina aakariguruyanu patukavali, sisters kadalkanu, kanakuntu urchuni, attu terekand.
When the last one, the lost one will be found.
A nasinchina aakariguri pelai epudaita vasodu.
Then, the church will go in a rapture.
Sangham etabhatlo kellypotun.
Will you like to go in a rapture?
A etabhatla kandamana ala nashpadutanaru.
Amen. I'm so happy for seven, eight people, they want to go in a rapture.
Eduguru indi madhi maatrenachayetare, etabhatla kellaalinte, bhaushanavaalabattu devanu kustotramantana.
Anyhow, God may just give you the grace and to me too.
Devu, ainan inkana kroponichunu gaka.
And I see in Andhra Pradesh, in Maharashtra, Tamil Nadu, and Orissa, Chhattisgarh, everywhere, the entire ministers, they are trying to find out the last, lost.
Andhala lo, Chhattisgarhani, Madhya Pradeshkani, ani chotla gora, a mari savakalu, nasinchina aaguruyanu patukodani kipayitlistavunaru.
Brother Sandeep is trying to find out that sheep, lost one.
Nasinchina aakariguri pelai patukodani kari Sandeep brother payitlistanaru.
Stephen Shiddhi is trying to find out.
Payitlistanaru.
Trying to find out where is that lost one.
Aakariguri pelai ekkundanu, andarapayitlistanam.
That, we have to just find that one.
Aakariguri pelai ekkada, aakariguri pelai ekkada, andarapayitlistanam.
Pastor Benny, Pastor Benny is searching that one.
Bennygar payitlistanaru, aakariguri pelai koraku.
Everyone, one is going this way, one is going that way, one is going.
Aakariguri pelai ekkundanu, ekkundanu, I two, O two, andaravelthavunna.
But I think that still, we did not find that one.
Andaravetukutunam, matthu bhaak kastapadi, ante thikina, aaguruyi pelai maatrun dorakatla, aakariguri pelai.
When it will come, we will not be sitting over here.
Mari indikante aakariguri pelai vachitemanu ikkada unangada, velli potam already.
And I want to ask everyone, are you seeking that last, lost one?
Neenu mala nadu tonana, a nasinchina aakariguri pelai, me andaravetukutunara?
People are just thinking, my, I'm trying to get that one.
Aandranadu gora, abba chapputochi, enje sena, aakariguri pelai patukavali, patukavali, andaravetukutunara.
But I am being a old man.
Aida maru ka muslali vaadiga, na konni vishyalu punchkavala kontnanu.
I want to give one suggestion.
Okachina suggestion, neekavala kontnanu.
Long time back, I'm born and brought up in a Nazirin mission.
Neenu Nazarin sanghavalo perigaram kanaka, Nazarin sanghavalo jernasangatani mito punchkavala.
My father was a preacher over there.
Ma Nazarin sanghavalo, ma naranagaru gora savakude.
And when I was a small boy like this, and missionary used to come from here and there from.
Neenu na akkadunapudu, okachina pelavadiga undulla unapudu, akkadu urchuni mari, konni vishyalu.
And that missionary told, once he came for the meeting.
A missionary chaptavunnaadu.
And he told the, what happened in Canada convention.
Canada convention lo jeregi, no ka sangatani, ainu naato punchkuntaunadu.
So, in Canada, there are this wheat field, miles and miles and miles and miles and miles.
Canada lo indi pilara, godumpalal unti, vikke vandalu veyala veyala ekralunti, anmata.
Some of them, they are having four thousand acre.
Yetla unti, ante polal, chinni chinni polal gaadu, panamadi, naalguvayala ekralu, iduval.
Two thousand acre.
Rundu vayala ekralu, palamunti godumpalam.
And they just do that farming with a machinery.
Allu yala jastaranta, vamsthayum, mari machine to jastavuntar.
Yes, last year, I had been to Canada.
For a convention.
Canada vellochanu. So, I realized that whatever that missionary was telling, that is truth.
Appudu velnapudu ardamayindhi, nisame, a missionarygar chepin, nisame, naakardamayindi.
So, they had a convention over there.
Akkadu okachan convention jarugutavunnaata.
Many people, they had attended that convention.
Mari chala mandha conventions kocheru.
And they had a big auditorium of the church.
Okachada auditorium lo, a kotal jarugutavunni.
Inside, the meetings were going on.
A lapalam, a kotal jarugutunni.
But outside, the children, they were playing.
Mari baita, pillal adukuntavunna, ikkunna.
Small, small children, they were playing hide and seek.
Chinni chinni pillalo, daguru motla ataladunna, dakkoatupatukotu, dakkoatupatukotu, ataradunna.
And where they were hiding, val ekkada dakunna, delsa, there was a wheat field.
Ok pillalunanta, dakku daguru motla atulakeli, a godumpalalu puydakunna.
And that wheat was so high.
A godumpalavandri, intalidu, chala ittundanu pilara, godumpal.
And the little boys, a chinni pillandaro, they were smart, but they were going inside.
Allu gora lapalakellypoya, a palalbutchilo, allu gora tapipoyinu, vandhitukavunna.
And another, they will be searching him.
Amigalalandaro gora, vandhitukavunna, vandhitukavunna.
And he could hear that they would run from this side, inside the field.
Kondar e side nucho, kondar outside nucho, kondani vayipulnu chappalun, vandhitukavunna.
They were playing and playing and playing.
Vandhitukutu, vandhitukutu, vandhitukutu.
But it was the evening time.
Ega lasti ke, andarikalispyar.
The sun was going down.
Ega suriastamayai potunanta.
That darkness is going to come.
Ega chikarabada botundi.
And when they were playing.
Aal epudaita aatlai poyindo.
They missed that little one.
Appu ardamayindi, aatlalu daguru motla, aatlal patukonana, konmanai poyindi, gani, okadillodu maatra tapipoyana.
Because from that wheat field, miles and miles.
Indikante a godumpalalu, milela 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 dhovalu.
He couldn't find the way to come out.
Mari andaralo yala tirigatiskun, ravalakora, arthankavutle.
As these boys were searching, he was lost.
Mari a tapipoyinu pillalun, patukodani kadi, no, veyala ekralu.
And some of the boys, they came and told.
Mari konthamandi, pardon?
Some of the boys, they came and told.
A pillalukonthamandu chal, peddolak chappar.
The meeting.
Pillalun, pillalun, tapipoyada, palal.
In the meeting, that little boy, so Johnny is missing.
Indigo meeting jarugutunapudu, baita, indigo Johnny elayadu, a Johnny daguru motla adukunanta, poy palalu dakunadu, tapipoyada chappar.
The sun was going down.
Suriastamayai potundi.
He is going to lose his life.
Mari chikadupadite, raatru, mari, ane indirugutu, chavika praname poch.
They were hundreds of ministers also.
Mari akkadu a kotala vachinavalu, vandhal mandhi savakalu gora unna.
Yes, like we are having hundreds of ministers.
Mari eirozu mandhukunanta, andaragora, vandhal mandhi savakalala gunnaru.
And all of them, all of them, they were in a panic, they were very much concerned about that lost one.
Andaragora, ata, padipoyinu, pillalukavasa, ento, aasikaligunna.
One pastor is going this way.
A pillalun, a katala vachina pastor, andaragora.
One was going this way.
Bhausaravayip, okavastari vayip, kellytukutunara.
They were searching and searching and.
Andaravetukata, vandhitukata, vandhitukata.
Then there was a old, old man.
Ega ante, pindu dorakala, appudu, egao ka peddain.
He was, he was having a walking stick.
Ainakarabattu, okamuslani naduskuntavuchad.
He said, brothers.
Anad brothers.
You are not going to get that boy.
Yela me retikite, a pillalun, me patukole.
This is not the way, you have a concern.
Idi kaadu, etike, margho, me gokbaachidavunna.
You are searching that one.
Viretukutunara, karate.
But you are not going to find that one.
Ainamira, ainu kanukkule.
Oh, don't go, don't search that way.
Alaala, vethikana.
One is going from Mumbai, one is going from Chennai, one is going Hyderabad, one is going.
Indigo, a Chennai, a Hyderabad, a e route, a rute, andi, andarakarakalakalitukunaru.
That way, you are not going to get that lost one.
Ala vetikite, me a pillalun, patukole.
That old man said.
A peddain chappadu, ka bishadar, vire andar renan chepi, atu itu, vandhitukunna, andanu pilchananta.
I just hold the hand.
Andarunamannanu, indigo, vela renmi rani.
Hold the hand.
Yela me chaypatukunana.
Hold the hand. And hold the hand.
Yela okonokor chaypatukunana.
This line.
Ala okonokor chaypatukun.
What happened?
Yela andar chaypatukun.
He said, make a line, big line.
Andaravakal lineka yarpadina.
Hundreds and hundreds of them.
Vandhal mandhi vandhitukutunna, savakal, andaragora. A line lo, andarapadukunana.
When they were holding the hand.
Andarala chail patukunana.
The old man told, they have to leave your hand.
Oh, naanta, okar chail, okar, vichpatukana.
That line became, ame, aakariguri pelai vachyavarku, e line odipatukana. Half mile.
Oh, aramayu.
He said, not to leave the hand.
E theme atu odipatukana.
Sandeep brother, don't leave the hand.
Anad, Sandeep brother, chayodipatuka.
Brother, brother Johnny, don't leave the hand.
Indigo, brother, chayodipatuka.
Brother Benny, don't leave the hand.
Brother Benny, a chayodipatuka.
What to do now?
Bring a.
Big line.
Andarup savakal patukoga, peddalayana.
He said, go forward.
Indigo, ipudreni, mudukandana. Okadigastanana.
That boy has to be.
Ipudupilla wardu, dorikittiralanana.
You did a few. Hallelujah. One is going that way, one is going.
Aakaritu, aakaratu, aakaritayalte patukole.
Amen. We have to hold hands in our hand.
Manamandhakora, okarichchadu, okar patukavali.
Otherwise, entire minister, they are having a burden for the lost one and rapture, rapture.
Chusara, man etabhatla kellaal, aakariguri patukavali, mudukila payitlisti, ila aiketalakonda payitlisti, maatrun patukole.
But brother Sandeep will tell.
How, Sandeep brother chappachu.
Brother, we are searching, can you hold?
Sandeep brother, brother na chaypatukanta, hey, vandhitukunana chepi, ainu, elunakundi.
You do your work.
Neenu banu juzga. Na banu juzkota.
Well, he tells someone.
Engo gora yeladigam.
Leave him.
Ainu vandhitukutu, manaputta, manaputta.
I don't agree with him.
Neenu ainuto, angikarichano.
Brother, sister.
Ona sodhala, sodhri.
How the lost, last ship will.
Yela etikite, a tapipoyinu, aakariguri pelani, ala patukogalamana.
The study setting.
Andikane, na karthika chappadu.
There will be a great darkness, the wolf will come.
Indikante, thodeelostiyana.
Then nobody will be able to find that.
Thodeel kanaka, vachichampeshtinasi, na, mekavaram.
So, have a unity.
Abati, manamajil aiketunala.
Unity.
Manamajil aiketunala.
And I believe that if that chain of the unity will be.
Iiketanu, iiketu.
We may find from Andhra, Telangana, Tenguru, Tel, Tamil Nadu, and Maharashtra, and Punjab, and everything.
Andhra, Telangana, Punjab, Maharashtra, ela, matru, ani chotla, kanak aiketunana.
I believe that soon, the last one will be found.
Nichenga manu, aakariguri pelanu, tapipoyinu, gori pelanu, patukogalam.
So, praise the Lord, the church must have the unity.
Abati, sanghani aiketavundalu.
The most divided church is the end time church. Most, most divided divisions.
Kuga vidipoyinu sanghalu, ante, eirozu, varthamana.
So many divisions, so many divisions.
Enno vidipotalu, enno vidipotalu.
One message.
Okay varthamana.
In one city.
Okay patnonglo.
At twenty-four churches.
Eremena, allu sanghalka vidipoyanta.
One faces this side, one faces that side.
Ok itu jostavuntar, ok itu jostavuntar, okla itu jostavuntar.
Don't shake hand with that fellow.
Anteda, ainuto maatru chedugalpma.
It's from another fellowship.
Ainu, mari koksadu.
Brothers, where is that unity?
Ekkundu, eirozu, aiket.
The first church in the Book of Acts, they had oneness.
Adhuma sanghavalo chodandi, varik aiketundu.
That is the reason they had a power.
Andike, varij majilashaktiundu.
They had a power of the Holy Spirit.
Varij majilashaktiundu.
When there is a division, where the Holy Ghost will come.
Manamajil, vibhadaalunapudu, parishuddhaatma shaktipanchayedu.
The Bible says, when they were with a one mind in a.
Ek manusu, ek atmotuntene, shaktipanchasedu.
We see the power of the Holy Spirit.
A parishuddhaatma shaktipundukavali.
If we will come with a one mind, one accord.
Manu ek manusu, ek atma kaliguntene, parishuddhaatma shaktipundakal.
God has to send the Holy Ghost.
Devu tapukonda, parishuddhaatma, pampi tiralsachedu.
We cannot do the ministry unless we have the Holy Ghost.
Manuki parishuddhaatmalakonda, manu, a parishuddha, parishuddha.
Here is that Peter, James, John, they did a ministry with Jesus Christ and three and a half years.
Mari, yesu prabhu to, muddunar sotsal parichari chesarval.
But they were, they were not converted.
Ainu, apostol muddunar sotsal parichari jastana gora, nizani kivali, puthiga, maarsabal.
Not a single apostle was converted.
Chappalanta, pandit mandhala, vaka apostollo gora, marmanusle.
And chip apostle was Peter.
Andarala bedda pastor, reni, petrugarai.
But yet, was not been converted.
Ainu marpulayi, pastorgarai.
Hey, I'm a preacher.
Petronanu, hey, neenu. Devu rajjar, prakaticham, enna urlikelavunna, petru.
And you said that I am not converted?
Alanta, naadigirukochi, naak marpul, marmarusle.
Not only you, but you all, no one is converted.
Naakegaadu, naathavuna, e pastor, orki marmanusle. Alukapadavunna, petru.
So, who will convert?
Mari, evu akkadu marmaruspe.
That from this religion to that religion, that religion to that religion.
Nizani, maru, vali jeshina, marpente, vaka matonu cho, vaka matonu lakamandhulu, marpsunaru, gani, nizani, valike, marpulayedu.
From the thunder to this one, and this one to thunder.
A urmullo, jedu, e savantandasunu, chindulokindulokindu, chinkodalok, marpujastanu, gani, antarangola, marpulayedu.
That is not a convert.
Adi kaadu, marpante.
The Holy Ghost will convert the people.
Parishuddhaatma, antarangani, marchal.
Yes, sir. Hallelujah. Where that they did miracles, so many of them, no, no conversion.
Chusara, annad bhutalu chastanaka, ani, antarangola, marpethile, ala kapudu.
When Jesus was going to go, he told the disciples and everyone, you must wait in Jerusalem.
Ainu neekay, paykilte, pujappadu, me parishuddhaatma, pundianta, varaku, payinu chi, erusti, erustu.
With a one accord and one mind.
Ek manusu, tok, ek atmo, drituchodu.
The Holy Ghost came out at ten.
Appudu parishuddhaatma digochan.
And they were filled with the Holy Spirit.
Appudu parishuddhaatma, nimpa badhar.
But before the Holy Ghost.
Parishuddhaatma digivochan, anta varaku.
Jesus was resurrected.
Mari, yesu prabhu, muddut, pundut, pundut, danan chendadaina.
And disciples, mari, chishilu, before that, before Jesus Christ could be crucified, ainu, mari, yesu prabhu, silvey bhattani, mari, chusara, they told Jesus, ali, yesu prabhu, chaptanaru. Peter said, petruj chaptanaru. Jesus.
Yesu.
All this Sandeep will run away, this Benny will run away, Stephen Shindhi will. But I will not, I will not, I will not.
Silvey bhattani, mudda petran. Prabha, e Sandeep, pudil pataychu. Ainu vandhitukchu, gani, neenu vandhitukutu, prabha, annad petru, yesu prabhu.
He knows everything.
Ainu kanne jispi.
He knows everything.
Ainu, mosal jastayu.
And what happened? He was a good person, but.
Manchode, papam petru, not converted. Papam problem indi, marmanusle, marpulayu, antarangola.
You can see what happened in a garden of guests somebody.
Andikane, guests somebody, thotle, egikindu, maru, telshikada.
Oh, when the, when the people, they came from that synagogue.
A mari, ayudila mandrala nucho, patukodanukochar, manuslu, yesu prabhu, chishil, patukodanu.
Rifa, yahuda, no.
Ke, kepa, yavud, mari, yoda, chalamandochar.
And he was, he told, that Jura stole.
Yoda, yoda, valita patuchadu.
Because see, don't make a mistake.
Yoda, annadu, me karthika, ainu, patukol, verevalakadu.
Because everybody, hair up to the shoulder, everybody is having a beard.
Aandaragora, mari, mesaunni, aandaragora, juttu, podugavunni.
I will tell you to whom to come.
Mari, ainu, valallo, pandit mandhala, evun, padukun, mandhala, evun, patukalo, neenu chaptan, neenu ellipo, evu, mudukun.
Because with the beard. Everybody, they were looking like.
Indikante, aandaragora, okela, aandaragora, juttunni, aandaragora, mesaunni.
So, Judas came and he killed.
Andikane, yesu prabhu, vachchi, prabhu degirukochi, mudukun.
Can the convert people do, will do that?
Mari, nizani, ke, marpuchendinavu, apanjisha, vada, yoda, iskariyothu.
And when that soldier, they came and they.
Ainu mudukun, asepayo, cheshaadu, ainu, patukun.
Peter, remove the sword.
Patukoga, vantane, petru, katthi dichar.
He's a believer.
Ma, ainu, mari, visvasanta, katthi patukun.
Peter is a believer.
Petru, visvasi, chodandi, katthi patukun.
But why you are keeping that sword?
Mari, visvasi, vachita, katthi, indukundhi.
Not yet converted.
Indukanta, inkam marpul, leduganak.
Jesus told, he rebuke, have kept it in a.
See, prabha, annadu, hey, laan beti.
Oh, prabha. Anyhow, he was taken, Jesus was taken, so.
Sorry, ainu, prabhu, ndiskeleru.
Peter wanted to see where Jesus is going now.
Petru chidhalukunadu, yesu prabhu, akkadu keltadu, chudavun.
I did a pile of all, the judgment hall, judgment was going.
Mari, petru, okka, petru, a pilati, okka, a nyai standan degirikeli, nyai petan degirik.
Jesus, Peter said, Jesus, all they will run.
Anan, antumunjan chappadu, prabha, andaravetukutar, prabha.
But not me.
Neenu maatru, vandhitukne, vandhitukne, prabha, annadu, petru.
Peter was just warming.
Mari, akkadu urchuni, chalimantakasun.
He had a cover on his face.
Mookani, mookani, kanapadukunda, motta, nik dopadesun.
What are the girl came, oh, looks like.
Aavnu, me petrugaru.
He is with Jesus.
Nu, ainu, patunna.
Jesus, hey, I don't know, what you are talking.
Emmatra, telsa, asal, neeku, do you have any brain?
And neeku, mindunna, aslo. I'm not that one.
Atkun, chelipoyadu.
The girl thought that I made a mistake.
Amma, neen, bhaushan, neen, tapujesene, mo, neen, kundapapam.
But I don't know what she was doing, again, she came.
Ma, na mallapapu, juttipikun, mallivochindi, e, na.
No, 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 you, you are that, he is.
Nu, ainu, patunna, petru.
He, take a vote, I'm telling the truth.
Amma, indigo, vutteme, 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 vandhitukun, chaptanu, ainu, ura, gora, na, teli, amma.
I don't know this one.
Asale, e, ura, teli, rak.
He's a believer.
Atantana, mari, ainu, visvasa.
Third time.
Malam, mudo, sarachinu, amma.
She said, yes, she is.
Na, na, indigo, nee maat, ardamayindi, nu, ainu, patunna.
By his speaking.
Indigo, nee maatal, ardamautundi.
You can understand, he was with him.
Nee maatal, bat, ardamautundi, ainu, thonene, na.
The book of Mark.
Marcus Vatara, aibadindi.
It has been written that he cursed.
Bible chaptun, a thodi, yesu, ni, sepichananta.
Peter cursed Jesus.
Petru, yesu, ni, sepichananta.
But he's a believer, huh?
Ah, ainu, visvasi, chodandi, mari.
Believer.
Visvasi.
Cursing.
Sepistanaru, prabhu.
Yesu, ni, sepistanaru. Tell you lie, but believer.
Bhaushan, visvasi, veshadari, e, visvasi.
You know that what happened?
Indi, chodandi.
When Jesus was crucified and after the three days resurrection had taken place.
Yesu prabhu, tirigilaysini, laysadu, muddrozalai poyindi.
Jesus came into their room.
A legisi, petru, degirukochadu.
Hallelujah. The doors and windows were closed.
Mari, talupul, ani, mousesunni, doorla, ani, mousunni.
When Jesus came after the resurrection.
Tirigilaysina, yesu prabhu, vachite, gora.
Believe that he's been killed and his body is in the grave.
Appudu, gora, annadu, ainu, chappoyadu, ainu, seri, ainu, savanu, na, akkadu.
And Roman soldiers are sitting over there.
Aakadu, a samadegira, Roma, sairikalukuchun.
This is the ghost.
E, yes, ekkaadu, e, yesu, diyamanta, petru.
And Jesus was going to them, don't get scared, come, come. When Jesus was going, they were going back.
Yesu prabhu, muddukostanti, bhai, padi, yarakka, paripotanta, petru, neele, neele, ante, petru, yarakka, paripotana.
He said, touch me, but who will touch the ghost?
Ainu, annadu, na, mutti, chodanda, yesu prabhu, bible chaptun, mutta, aanu, gora, bhai, pattaranta, indikante, diyamakunna.
Jesus showed his hands and his.
Yesu prabhu, chachilu, chodanda, ya, neene, patukun, gora, bhai, vasunanta.
E, thahari, comment all?
A lapala, ainuto, pat, ainu, chaal, pat, tim, tenadu, timi, chupichadu.
Jesus was gone.
Yesu, velli, poyadu.
The doors and the windows were closed.
Ainu, velli, poyen, a, talupu, mousi, ani, mousi, talupu, chelipoyadu.
They were thinking how he came.
Ainu, ellipoyen, akadukuntana, ainu, timi, chupich, velli, poyen, a, gora, talupu, leesun, ne, kadi, ala, vachadu.
That is not, that is a ghost only.
Appude, ka, konfamizkunna, nichenga, vachin, yesaya, gadi, yesu, diyam.
They were scratching there, how it happened.
A, gora, manu, prabhu, yala, diyamayipoyanu, gunna, talu, gora, konta.
They had a meeting.
Alukurchuni, okotam, betukun.
Peter told, Peter is a leader.
A meeting, leder, orant, petrugaru.
See, brother Sandeep, I'm going.
Sandeep, brother, Sandeep, na, altenanu.
I'm going to go back.
Neenu ellipotana, neenu ellipotana, yelipotana.
Yeah, from where he was brought by Jesus.
Ekka nu, yesu prabhu, savak, chadu, akkadu, kellypotana, petru. Peter was a man. Chodani, yelipotala, gora, backsliding, pashtevaru, petre.
James said, John said that we will also.
Yakub Yohana, neenu, velli, pote, me, gora, ellipotana, yelipotana.
Matthew was thinking.
Matte, yelukutana.
I lost my government job.
Na government ujagan, pokutukun.
I'm not going to get it.
Malan, na government ujaguna, kradu.
These fellows, they can catch the fish, I can't.
Mari, eelanta, malay, sevalpatukogal, neenu, matti, songkar, government ujagan.
Why to sit over here, where to go?
Mari, ipud, neelat, na government ujagun, gora, mari, enje, yali?
He also said that I will also.
Neenu, gora, yezha, upan, me, thopadu, neenu, gora, sevalpatukun, matti, velli, arthu.
All they went over there.
Andaravane, kellypotun.
Backslide.
Andaravane, kellypotun.
Because no Holy Ghost.
Indikante, parishuddhaatma, leduganaka.
No Holy Ghost.
Parishuddhaatma, baptisso, leduganak.
They are believer like you had me.
Ainu, chodandi, valu, me, gula, gana, ainu, visvasale.
Believer without the Holy Ghost.
Ainu, parishuddhaatma, lekunana.
That is a condition.
Adi, vala, parishidda.
But we know that Jesus Christ told.
Prabhu, vayisup, chepedavalki.
Mary, Maria, tell them that before you go to Thibias, I will be there.
Hallelujah. Prabhu chappadu, Maria, vali, yelipotun, kani, chappu, vali, vellat, anikimundene, gali, kellypotana, chappananta.
Before.
Hallelujah.
Before the believer could go in a backslide.
Hallelujah, visvasi, padipotana, anikimunde, atanikante, muddu, prabhu, patukonana, kaltana.
Amen. He said, before you go there.
Anad, petru, nu, padipotana, anikimunde, neenu, akkadu, patukonana, kaltana, petru.
What Peter is speaking and what the believer.
Asale, petru, e, maat, arthu, vali, e, maat, arthu.
In that room, in that room, they were talking.
A roomlo, vali, e, maat, arthu, kontnanu, chodandi.
Jesus went to Thibias and waiting this backslide.
Veel, yelipoyadu, planjastanaru. Aalakante, muddu, Thibias, samutra, ndakira, a Thiran, aayana, alakos, idilchavun.
They will come, they will come.
Vastar, ekadu, yelipoyadu, chastanu, chappadu, chappadu, gora, chastar, vali, idilchastanu.
All eleven of the backsliders are coming.
A, yelipotana, a, a, hallelujah.
He knows everything, he knows everything.
Ainu, kanne jispi, samastavirigun, vana.
But where these people, the chosen people, where they will go?
Indukopadu, vali, akkadu, kellypo.
It is not Peter, James, John had chosen, he had chosen them.
Chodandi, petru, Yakub, Yohan, valu, prabhu, nenikola, prabhu, e, vali, nenikun.
So, the predestinated one, chosen one, even if you want to run away, you cannot run.
Aavnu, indukopadu, a, air, parchipadu, a, vali, yelipodavu, neenu, run, parigatta, vana, ainu, vallu.
I tried to run, but where to run?
Neenu, gora, parigadu, vana, bhaari, potu, vana, akkadu, paripon.
He brought all of them.
Yantado, vellam, malapatukuchis.
He had a meeting.
Ainu, okotamunakada.
Especially with Peter.
Petru, bhaaga, okotamun.
Say, you did so many miracles and so many things and you tackled the oath, I will not live, I will willing to die for it, but yeah, you know that you are not yet converted.
Appudanu, petru, aputal, jeshanu, neenu, suchikri, jeshanu, neenu, enno, kariyal, jeshanu, pranam, pina, vandhitukun, prabha, vutteme, vandhitukun, a, ainu, neeku, marpulayu, jepanu.
Jesus told Peter and John's gospel, when thou will be converted.
Amen. Andikane, petru, swarthupadu, Yohan, swarthalu, petru, nu, marpuchendina, tharvata, nee, sahodan, balaparchan, chappadu.
Then go and strengthen thou, brother.
Appudu, nee, sahodan, balaparchu, annadu.
So, he was converted on the day of Pentecost.
Nizani, pentukost, tenana, appudanu, nisang, marpuchendu.
They want to go in a backsliding condition.
A, atanikante, muddu, vali, padipoyadu, nizani.
And they did a wonderful, powerful work.
A tharvata, vali, epudaita, marpuchendaru, a, aputam, parichari, jeshar.
In a fifth chapter of Book of Acts.
Aido, matti, ma, sorry, apostol, kari, aido, jamlo.
They were put in a prison.
Vali, jailla, patupatar.
And nice prison was strong prison.
A, a jail, ma, balamayana jail, alam, gora, chala, gitti, jesharu.
King told that, bring these fellows.
Razannadu, this, this, karan, landar, ne, gora.
When they opened the prison door.
A, a, esna, jail, a, talupu, jesharu.
They came and they are not there.
Vali, esna, jail, padrangana, undi, a, jail, esna, vali, maatru, leer, vali, chusar.
Lock is there, gate is closed, but.
Lock is there, gate is closed, but they are not there. Dharan talupesun, jail, musesun, kani, apal, pitnol, matram, missayipoyar, Petru. It is good for the rapture. Etabodu, chalam, manchidu, Petru. Hallelujah. Let the doors and everything be closed, but. Hallelujah. Will escape from. Hallelujah. Vali, jail, leesi, agad, leesi, egad, leesi, ennigal, leesna, alu, matram, akarun, chelipoyar, alaga, etabodu, kodha, lakha, Petru. Nik, ennigate, leesna, nu, matram, etabodla, elipotana kodha. Amen. Now, what happened in the twelfth chapter? Panindu adhyam, enjarugutavundu. I, I, I am so happy for that. Panindu adhyam, chudan, vaksari, vaksari, chudan, Petru, tian, apostle, kariyal, panindu adhyam. Book of Acts. Apostle, kariyal, panindu adhyam, Petru. They put Peter in a prison again. Ekka, Petru, ni malla, jail, pettar, Petru. And when he was put in a prison, that was the next time, it was going to be a Easter celebration. Mari, tellava, Petu, champa potana, Petru. And then he was put in a prison that on a great day. King wanted to bring that Peter and cut his hair. Petu, champa, da, jail, pettar, akar, mari, apostle, panindu adhyamlo. When he wanted to cut his hair. Athadu, talana, champ, talana, rakibay, daman, pitnapu. Here is that, that king Herod, he told the Roman soldiers, this fellow, you have to be very careful. You know that from that prison, they had escaped. Amen, hallelujah. Isar, Petru, tellari, Petu, champa, ala, jail, pette, mudu, hero, chala, gittiga, jepadananta, yalan, jagatka, juzkodi, point, sir, akar, ilaga, jail, leesao. Laapala, jail, badrangaa, alaga, tellari, sir, ki, mayimayaro, isar, ala, jaragododo, kabatti, nalgu, chudustayala, siniyani, bettandi, jagatka, apala, unadi, male, matram, tapichkododo. Actually, that king Herod did not believe these soldiers. Maybe they might have opened, taken the bribe, and they might have. Anukunadu, nizani, hero, drazu, alu, tapichipodu, edu, undadu, kani, illa, lanchandiskoni, madjarathri, manol, dhillipet, edu, mosan chesuntaru, anukunadu, hero, drazu. But this time, kani, isar, ala, jaragododo, he put that Peter in a four behind the four gates. Bible chaptundi, nalgu, ah, charla, tarvata, laapala, charla, pettar, Petru. Just last chamber. A laapala, gadhul, pettar, nalgu, charla. Closed, lock was there. Ah, laapala, nalgu, deesaro. Soldiers. Kodakadu, esaro, pati, chotu kodha, sepail, patukunadu, ochadu. And Peter was put with a handcuff with two another soldier. Mari, antyagadu, Petu, ni laapala, chethulki, esipatti, Petu, chethulki, esana, bedilu, vala, chethulki, kodha, evu, pakkanuna, sepail, chethulki, tapichkopa, kodha, isari. Ane, what they call it, bedi? Bedilu. Ah, one bedi, the police. Ah, police, bedilat. This side is another one. Sangkellu. So, itto side, ee bedilu, itto side, ee bedilu, sangkellu, itto, police, itto, police. Peter also this hand or this hand. Kabatti, Petru, itto, police, otto, police. One, two, three. Yurugurunna, laapala, all handcuff. Andrakoda, chethulki, bedil, leesun, Petru, sangkellu, leesun. And the guards were standing over there near the door. Indupadu, charasal, le, leesi, baitu kodha, mali, sepail, una. Next door also. Ah, tarvata, inkogu, charasala, akar, mali, kodha, sepail. Ah, tarvata, inkogu, charasala, akar, kodha, mali, sepail. All they were the iron gates. Malla, valandragoda, bedda, bedda, yinapa, ayudal, darichunadu, malla. Malla, yinapa, balamayana, charasal, lavi. Hero, hero, dharukuntanadu. Thought that that day, how they escaped. Asale, aroji, ela, tapichkupayunna, allu. Must be these soldiers must have. Sepail, yavud, bribe. And open the. Taluk, terisuntar, yavud. That hero said now. Isar, anukunadu, hero, d. I will lock the door. Isar, ee thalam, yavud, chetikino, thalam, ha, degire, patukunadu, hero, drazu. Second door. Rondo, thalam, thalam, degire, mudu, charasala, thalam, aindagire. And. Naalgu, vanni, thalam, aindagire, patukunadu. Last, last soldier was thinking that, king will give me those keys. Chivvar, karkuntananta, a laapala, baitu, na, sepail, kunkanta, ee thalam, kanesun, na, kanesan, kunkanta, chivvar, sepail. No, 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 no. Hmm, annananta, devare, kevano. Because he was having a doubt. Endika, kodha, anuma, hero, drazu, kentu, mudu, deesun. I am going to take this key in my palace. Kabatti, ee thalam, tiskuneli, poi, ee thalam, na, degire, patukunadu, ni, tiskil, paday, patukunadu, Petru. He was sleeping. Elipoyana, patukunadu. Keys under the pillow. Ipud, chodan, ah, thalam, dhibikam, patukunadu, hero, drazu. King was sleeping. Raat, chakka, nitra, botanadu. Keys under his pillow. Thalam, dindikun, ne, eva, degire, le. Bible says Peter was also sleeping. Bible chaptundi, Petru, kodan, nitra, botan, Petru. I, 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 I'm surprised. Nakha, chenaga, galgis, nizani, kiti. That Peter was supposed to be tellari, Petru, thalam, kastar, Petru. His head was going to be chopped off. Tellar, kibodar, tellara, aini. He, this fellow, how can he sleep in the night? Asale, tellava, tampe, bodananta, yela, nitra, padthu, Petru, aini, asale. Something, something wrong with the. Edu, Petru, edu, thada, undal, Petru, tellar, chappotana, nitra, vasun, aini, asale. In the morning, nine o'clock, they are going to cut. Tellar, thalam, kibodan, aini, yela, vasun, nitra, Petru, akar, asale. And Peter, in a jail, handcuff. Malla, atupakka, itupakka, mali, esun, bedilu. I'm slipping. Bedil, leesana, nitra, botan, Petru. Gurka, pettun, nitra, botananta, Petru. Ala, gurka, pettun, nitra, botananta. These soldiers, they were disturbed, this fellow. What kind of, first time we saw. Petru, gurka, pettantte, aine, sepail, nitra, ratla, eh. Eh, gurakarabu, etta, bike, gurki, dhusla, divtho. We saw so many prisoners, they don't sleep at all. Asale, me, jail, intamand, kaidilipet, ne, purdu, chusavu, va, chappopadu, nitra, devadu, ki. This is the, intar, nitra, bodu, anudu, gurka, pettun, nitra, bodananta, aina. Did a deep sleep. Petru, bhag, gaan, nitrala, kela, gurka, lavutanadu, mali, lavutanadu. They were looking, what kind of fellow? Aldo, eem, manisina. Anyhow, they were tired also. Am, ala, kodha, arispyar, motthani, gurka, vini, vini, nitra, rakapana, edu, tellar, katta, edu, nitra, pyar, alpa. Pastor Peter was sleeping. Pastor Petru, gar, nitra, bodan, chodan, Petru. Twelfth chapter, five verse. Panindu adhyamlo, aido, vachinavlo. Pastor, pastor Peter was sleeping. Petru, charasal, le, vachabadenu, Petru, gar, sangamayte, athanakoraku, atyaasakito, devanike, pradhana, chayichundenu. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Oh, Peter therefore was kept in a prison, but prayer was made without singing of the church unto God for him. Petru, charasal, le, vachabadenu, aite, sangamayte, athanakoraku, atyaasakito, devanike, pradhana, chayichundenu. Hallelujah. Sometimes the pastor is very much tired. Panisal, pastor, alisipotana, nisame. If he sleeps. Aite, athanapadukunti, athan, nitra, bodde. Let him sleep. Aine, nitra, pani, vandi. Peter was sleeping. Petu, nitra, bodanadu. But not the church. Aite, Petu, nitra, bodanana, kani, sangam, nitra, bodla, Petru. The church was in a prayer. Sangam, prathala, vandu, Petru. The church was in a prayer. Asangam, devanu, to, prathala, poradu, vandu, Petru. What kind of prayer? Itto, mantte, prathula, chodan, Petru. With a one accord, one. Oh, ekammanu, ekatma, atyaasakito, pradhisunadu, lakada. Desperation. Vaka, balamayana, niraashan, nisprukal, pradhisunadu, lakada. The prayer was gone. Prathana, parlok, kani, devanu, sari, chertavundu, lakada. Jesus saw the church praying. Parlok, unandu, Yesu Prabhu, pradhisunadu, sangha, chusavunadu, lakada. What a church. Bah, eemi, sangam, idananta, devanu, chusi. What a church. Hallelujah, eemi, sangam, Prabhu, betchukunadu, Petru. Said Gabriel.